I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Ms. Bettis, you take the roll, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Anowski.
Here.
Show Councilmember Squires and Councilmember Lynch absent and excuse, please.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have item four, the approval of the agenda. Council, we're going to pull B two. Mayor Monroe Baptist Church, they don't need to block the road closed off for their free fare, they're going to handle it in their parking lot. So, we don't need to close the road, so we can pull B two. So, I'm looking for approval of the agenda without B two.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Anowski.
I move to approve the meeting agenda of Monday, August 24, 2015, minus item, or study session item B two, Mayor Monroe Baptist Church Community Free Fair.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Anowski.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Move on to community events. We have Sheila Zawuski, Zawuski, did I say that right?
Zawuski.
Zawuski, I'm sorry. Senior Activities Coordinator for Western Wayne County Senior Olympics. Sorry for butchering your last name. Probably not the first time, right?
That's not. AAA, yeah. Just Congress Smith. I'm the new Senior Activities Coordinator for Maplewood Senior Center for Garden City. I'm here to talk about the Wayne County Senior Olympics that went on for the first, you know, for the whole week. The week that we started was August 10th for the opening ceremony, and it was a beautiful day, plus it was, all the communities from all the seniors were there, representatives for their city stood behind banners and everything, it was a really nice moment representing their cities. There was Commissioner Richard LeBlanc there, behind our banner, holding our banner for Garden City. We had Senator David Koeniznik, Councilmember Pam King, Commission of Aging Sharon Hassett, Carrie Perton, and Nora Fix there, as well as much of the Garden City senior residents behind our banner, and it was really nice. The next day, the Senior Center of Maplewood hosted the Pinnacle Tournament, and that was a great success as well. We had 56 participants for the tournament, for the event. We had sandwiches, we had everything for them, pot, coffee, everything before the event. Another great success, we had a 50/50, share the wealth of the tickets, and half of it is going for next year for the Senior Olympics, and the other half, there was a person that was in the event, the cards, Helen Temman from Wayne that won. So, another fun, great fun day. For the day of the event, we had so many volunteers, we had, we couldn't have done it without them. We had Walgreens, Garden City Walgreens, the store manager donated all the playing cards for the event, and he was a store manager, Jerry Hooper, and he helped us out as well. The Commission of Aging Sharon Hassett, a really special thanks, because this was my first event as well with the Senior Olympics and everything, and she guided me through it, she helped me through it, and she did a lot, she did the table, centerpieces, she did so much, and I must admit, it was a real nice event. We had the Senior Volunteer Committee from Maplewood Senior Center, Lois McAllister help out assisting all the seniors that day. We had volunteer Cheryl Perton, Mike Lawrence, Olivia Johnson, Julie Slaybaugh. It was just a success, the whole day was a success. As for the medals for Garden City, Garden City won eight medals. For Garden City representing, and I was happy to hear that, I'm hoping for next year more, but we had eight of them, and I'm going to read off all the ones that won for the, there was all different types of, like Nora Fix, she was in the baking bread, and she won a gold medal. David Ramier, a soccer kick, and that was a gold medal. Lena Boyd, Wii bowling, she won a silver for Garden City, a silver medal. David Ramier, frisbee toss, and he won a bronze. Mary Margaret James, bocce ball, bronze. Sharon Hassett, goth, and she won a bronze. Pat McCarge, goth. She also won a bronze. And Cheryl Parton, goth, bronze. As well as Garden City, there were so many events that I did not know about that the Senior Olympics has, I just want to read them all off, because I want everybody to be informed about it, because I was amazed how fun it was, and I'm hoping next year there's more as well. They had pickleball, horseshoes, knitting, quilting, things I never would even think about, marksmanship, Scrabble, softball, volleyball, swimming, shuffleboard, bowling, art, bike races, football throw, I can keep on going, photos, Uker, beanbag toss, billiards, basketball shoot, tennis, trivia, there's something there for any senior, and I'm just wanting to, you know, let them know they need to do this, because it's just a lot of fun, and it's a good event. And I'm proud of all the participants, all the ones that won awards, and I just want to state as well, if I forgot somebody's name, I apologize, there were so many people there, there were so many volunteers there, there was, it was just outstanding, I was amazed by the community, how everybody came together for this, and I know it's a yearly event for them, and I'm looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Welcome to Garden City also.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, comments from state and county officials. I see we have State Representative Julie Plowicki, do you have anything for us tonight?
Thanks, Mayor Walker, and thanks, council members. Well, I just came to let you know that there are a lot of things going on in Lansing.
Good ones.
Unfortunately, some of them aren't lawmaking, some of them are probably future Lifetime Channel movie situations, so we'll see how that plays out. I got your resolution about the fireworks, and you completely have my support on that. I can let you know that Henry Yanez, Rep. Yanez, from Sterling Heights, that's his bill, he has been working on that, he's been going around the House floor, and he has some partial numbers of what each of the communities are receiving revenue-wise from the sale of fireworks. He didn't have mine when I spoke with him on Wednesday, but he said he's going to get them. But he is working towards getting a hearing, that's the bottom line, because the bill has been introduced, it has a lot of cosponsors, but he has to have a hearing for it before it can go anywhere. So hopefully, people will continue to contact their state reps and let them know that this is an important issue, and that we want it to return to what it was prior to 2011 when they passed this last law. As far as the roads, I've been reading a lot of comments about how the state reps should be a part-time job, because they left Lansing without completing their task of creating a roads plan. So, I'm here to defend myself just a little bit, so bear with me, Mike. The plan that, and first of all, you all know that the other party, and you know who I'm speaking of, they are in charge, they are in the majority, and so if they can get all their members, or the majority of their members, to vote on a plan, that's what our new road bills and road laws will be. Unfortunately, they are having a little trouble within their own party coming up with a number of votes, so they're relying on the Democrats to give them a few votes. However, the plan that they have put before us would be $600 million in revenues, and $600 million that would come out of the general fund, and there's absolutely no guarantee that a year from now, there will be $600 million to spare in the general fund. Complicated by that is the fact that the Medicaid expansion is going to have to be funded more by the state a year from now, and so Governor Snyder requested that that be put into the budget as of, for 2016, and start putting money towards that, start paying some of that off. That didn't happen. So now, not only will we have to find $600 million for the roads, they will have to find about $200 million for the Medicaid expansion, plus anything else that happens to come along. So, unfortunately, they could pull money from security, safety, they could pull it from the schools, even though they're not supposed to touch the school aid fund, they could pull it from that, because they've done that before, I mean, there are countless things that they could pull that money away from, and the Dems are not happy, myself included. I want to know where that money is coming from, because then in 2017, when we have to create another budget, we're going to be doing the same thing all over again. So, to use that often coined expression, they are simply punting it down the road to the next group of people who have to come up with a new plan. So the Dems have held out on this, and we will continue to hold out. That doesn't mean just because we went home that nobody's working on it, because really the people that are working on it is the conference committee, and they continue to work, although now Governor Snyder's in China, trying to find some business for Michigan, which is fine, but when he comes back, hopefully, there will be some movement at this, on this conference committee, and there'll be a solution. So, I'm sitting there in Lansing, just waiting for something to do as far as the road bills. I'm working on my own bills in the meantime, I got a lot accomplished while I was there this past week, but I am extremely frustrated, and for being a first-termer, this is not how I thought it was going to be, but that's okay, I'm going to charge ahead, and we'll see what happens, but I'm just trying to defend myself, because everybody's looking upon us like, well, what are you doing? You're doing nothing, and it's not that we're doing nothing, it's just we're waiting to take our turn and vote on a road plan that is sustainable, because clearly this one is not. The end. So, if you have any questions for me, I'll gladly take them, but that's my story.
Any questions?
In regards to the fireworks resolution, do we need to type another resolution giving the three options which other states are doing currently? Because the resolution that we...
Other states or other cities?
Our other cities, excuse me, yes.
You can, but I mean, bottom line is, it's all going to come down to whether or not Representative Yanez's bill gets a hearing.
So it doesn't matter if we do another resolution, they know...
No, because yours has already been submitted, so they know where the city stands on that.
Okay.
And I know where you stand on that, so residents don't have to call me and let me know where they stand on it, because I do know, so I would say no, at this point you're safe with what you have.
At what point does the House say, we're not listening to it? At what point do we need to say, let's submit again, and keep talking about it?
Or try to get a ballot proposal. So you would have to have a petition, I mean, if we're not going to go the route of trying to pass a new bill, or repeal the bill that's there, you would have to do a ballot proposal, and so you would have to start collecting signatures and try to get it on the ballot.
Okay.
That's the only other option at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the state rep? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, I don't see anybody here from the county. Okay, item seven, we have no petitions or communications, we have no public hearings tonight. Move on to item nine, consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Anowski.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King, any discussion from the table? From the general public? Mr. Weissel.
I know that on the minutes of the last meeting, that Mayor Walker and Police Chief Murray are not listed as being absent, and that would hope to be included now, and I've also thought about this for a time, and I'd like to bring it up at this moment. It has struck me that in the minutes of the meeting, there are no minutes that reflect on any of the comments or the reports from council at the conclusion of the meeting, and I just wonder why and how that could be. Certainly, our comments are denoted, and it would, in my mind, be constructive if your comments were also put in. After all, the minutes of the meeting is the history, the history of what has taken place that evening, so I will hope that you will take action on that and begin to reflect on the total of the meeting. It also should be court remarried at the table that are in such a nature that they are later oftentimes confusing or denied, that having had occurred. If it is reflected in the minutes, there can be nothing of that nature taking place.
Thank you. The maker of the motion, are you okay with making the correction that I was absent in the...
Yes.
Second, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make those corrections.
The chief isn't shown as absent, just the voting members of the council.
Okay. So you have me as absent, okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Anowski.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Move on to our study session, B one, road closure for the St. Thomas, I can't get used to that, St. Rayfield, St. Thomas Festival.
C.
C.
We're with C. Moving on to B three, consider opt-out model for Public Act 152.
C.
And item four, engineering for water reliability study in general plan.
C.
And amendment to the council meeting schedule.
C.
Okay, moving on to the C agenda, C one.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Anowski.
I move to approve the St. Thomas the Apostle Parish Festival Block Closure at Beechwood between Mayor Monroe and Moller on Friday, September 18th through Sunday, September 20th, 2015.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Any discussion from the table? Councilmember King.
The one thing I would like to see in that is the 20 signs that they have put out in the right-of-way, get put behind the sidewalk, I guess.
Yeah, we can let them.
Yeah.
Let them know.
Uh huh.
Any other comments from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Anowski.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Item C three, consider opt-out model.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Anowski.
I move to adopt the following resolution in compliance with the requirements of Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act by adopting the opt-out model as set forth in Public Act 152.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Discussion from the table?
Yes, is this the same as the one we had during the last...
We have to do this every year, right?
Yeah, but I mean, is this the same one? Okay.
Except for a change in dates, that's correct, Your Honor.
Thank you.
This is once a year, courtesy of the EVIP.
Just passing through, got it, okay, thank you.
From the general public?
Yes, sir, what is it?
Chief, go ahead.
Back in 2011, the state legislature passed a law that local governments had to adopt one of three programs. Number one was that employees would contribute 20% to their health care. Number two was that there would be a hard cap that the employee or employer would pay. And number three was that the municipality can opt out of this. Garden City has chosen to opt out of it, because in turn, the employees began contributing more to the retirement fund as a result.
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Anowski.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Item C three, consider opt-out model.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Anowski.
I move to adopt the following resolution in compliance with the requirements of Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act by adopting the opt-out model as set forth in Public Act 152.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Discussion from the table?
Yes, is this the same as the one we had during the last...
We have to do this every year, right?
Yeah, but I mean, is this the same one? Okay.
Except for a change in dates, that's correct, Your Honor.
Thank you.
This is once a year, courtesy of the EVIP.
Just passing through, got it, okay, thank you.
From the general public?
Yes, sir, what is it?
Chief, go ahead.
Back in 2011, the state legislature passed a law that local governments had to adopt one of three programs. Number one was that employees would contribute 20% to their health care. Number two was that there would be a hard cap that the employee or employer would pay. And number three was that the municipality can opt out of this. Garden City has chosen to opt out of it, because in turn, the employees began contributing more to the retirement fund as a result.
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Anowski.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Item C four, water reliability study.
Mayor.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Yes, sir, I move to authorize Hennessy Engineers to complete a water reliability study in the general plan in accordance with a letter from Hennessy Engineers dated July 6, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $9,500.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Any discussion from the table?
I just want to make the comment in the letter describing what was being asked of us to vote on, this basically is a mandatory study, from what I understand, and I like the fact that it's also stated, it's a perfect example of an unfunded mandate, so we have to do it, but we have to also pay for it ourselves, too. I would like, just a little bit of an explanation of what the study is compared to what the study, I mean, we just had the study, the water study, not too long ago, is there any type of overlap?
This is required from the MDEQ, I know they monitor flow rates, average daily flows, maximum daily flow, but I'll let...
They monitor trends and things of that nature.
Yep.
There's a few items involved, a couple of years ago, we did do a leak detection study here in the city to figure out what, how much we're losing in water, and we did find out in that, that where I think it was about a 5% water loss, it wasn't too bad. That part of that will be included into this reliability study as well, to show what the water loss is. Also, annually, the city has to do a water quality report, submit that out to all the residents as well, and that's something that's done on an annual basis, basically just showing the residents, basically what, you know, the quality of the water. This study here is not on an annual basis, it's usually about every five to 10 years that the MDEQ will require that this plan be done, basically it's to update the capital improvement plan, to come up with future projects on a five and 20-year program, it also looks at the flows and pressures of the water system to make sure that fire flows are being met throughout the entire city, and that there's sufficient pressure throughout the city, it also looks at if there's any future development in the city that the system can handle that, or if there's any upgrades that need to be taken. It also looks at other items as if the city were to, if they needed to build a water tower, or look at storage possibly, we look at that as well, to see if there's a need for that, which is highly doubtful for Garden City, since it's pretty well-developed already, but that is a requirement to look at that as well. It also looks at putting together a response plan for any emergencies, if there's any major water main breaks, we'll put a plan together in this study as well, so that the city's prepared for if that event takes place. Other than that, and then the general plan basically is just an outline of the system itself, and just basically an inventory of the system, providing the age of water mains, size, condition, if we know it, number of water main breaks that may have taken place within that main, that also gives us a guide as far as which water mains to look at replacing in the near future.
Thank you, Ryan.
So the information actually is, will be very useful?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the general public?
Ryan, how long is that good for? I mean, how long will that test? Is it a five-year?
Five years.
A minimum of five years, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Baco.
How come it's money? It's good, it's good.
We're required to do it, Mr. Baco, we have, we're required...
Nine dollars a dollar for that?
How many thousand dollars?
Nine thousand.
Up to, up to, not to exceed $9,500.
You put it that way, it's our money.
We don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice, we're required to do it. Anybody else?
Mr. Curran, are you sure you couldn't do that for free? I got just, just to say that, we're charging an hourly rate based on our general engineering contract, so we only charge based on the hours spent on the project at a maximum of $9,500.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Anowski.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next is the amendment to the council meeting schedule, we have the National League of Cities is going to be in our town the weekend of October 10th, when we have our chili cook-off, they wanted to attend one of our community events, so since they're in town that weekend, they were hoping to come to a council meeting on Monday, August, October 12th, and we didn't have one scheduled, so what we want to do is cancel October 5th and move it to October 12th, so the National League of Cities will be here to come to one of our council meetings. That's the reason for moving the meeting from October 5th to October 12th.
Your Honor.
I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember Anowski?
I move to cancel the regular council meeting currently set for October 5th, 2015, and to schedule a new regular council meeting for October 12th, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King, discussion from the table?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I think it's phenomenal that they're coming, we're actually going to be in the eye of somebody important, and also, I think at the same time, we should realize that the program itself is going to go beyond, it's, what are they calling it now? I know they have a name for it, the extension, after chili cook-off, what is it called?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just calling it the after event.
Afterburn, that's it. There will be an afterburn, there we go, and what it titles is that after 5 o'clock, when the chili cook-off is done, will it go on, and there will be music there, there's a band coming in, there'll be food, there'll be beer in the beer tent, and people can have a darn good time until...
There certainly is a good reason for, uh, moving the date. I applaud that. I do have a question. If the meeting is moved from the fifth to the twelfth, is there any other alterations or how is the rest of the council meetings set after that? Are we going to have a meeting on the twelfth and then the nineteenth, or does it change anything to follow the twelfth?
Nothing else changes.
Just that date.
So, you're going to have the twelfth and nineteenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's no meeting on the nineteenth?
Yet there's no meeting scheduled, though, for the nineteenth. There's no meeting on the nineteenth.
They're scheduled on the twenty-sixth.
Yes. In October.
So, it is?
Be okay?
No changes?
No changes except that day.
We were going from the fifth to the?
Twelve.
Fifth to the twelfth.
But before, we were going from the fifth to the twenty-sixth, three weeks in between?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Nowoski?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Okay, we will move on to item ten, public comments. This is your opportunity to come up. There's a five-minute time limit. When you come to the podium, please state your name. Anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Weisler.
I'd like the people of this, of the good people of this city to listen and relate to the things that are happening in the, in the city, and this is a good example, I feel. With the terrorist events happening almost on a daily basis and causing death around the world, it is inconceivable that word would be uttered at this council table, at a council meeting. Yet, that is exactly what resident Dick King called the good citizens of our community at a recent council late July meeting. And in greater shame, greater shame, was the approving applause, the raised voices, the smiles and inaction on the part of the mayor and council. Why was this circus behavior allowed all evening despite violating your own council rules and residents in the past having been ejected for a lot less reasons? A lot less reasons. The obvious answer, they were the mayor's followers and his stooges. On July tenth, my wife Winnie began her comments using the word terrorist. She barely got the words out when Chairperson Lynch interrupted her, threatened to limit her constitutional rights to free speech. After this failed attempt to quiet Winnie, she completed her remarks. Later, Mrs. King defended her husband by noting his remarks were not aimed at us in particular. As she went on, Mrs. King, who uses sayings quite often, said to Winnie, "But if the shoe fits, wear it." My reply to her this evening is, "An empty barrel makes the most noise." An empty barrel makes the most noise. My last remark is quick. In the future, I intend to keep this city residents aware of the big money contracts that are sure to flow. The needy people of this city are going to pay for the greedy people and pay heavily and dearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Michael Jones, Stooge. Just want to remind people that this is the last week of the Methodist Free Concerts. They have their Ice Cream Social and, and big event on Wednesday at six thirty at the First Methodist Church, and, uh, attendance has been remarkably good for a first-time program. The first four weeks, they've averaged, I guess, around eighty people, so, those of, who have made it have come away each time saying, "This is a really great program," and they were glad to do it, and I think it's a good community event, and want to make sure that nobody forgets about the big one coming up this week.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Kevin Hunt, Bridge Street. Uh, just to come up here to defend Mr. King. I heard what he had to say. You can go on your computer, you can rerun it, you can listen to it. I know people do that all the time. Got to watch it over and over and over again to see what they can pick apart, come up here, and, uh, after all those times of watching it, not even understand what was said. I heard the man. He never once picked on one single person. He made a general statement, but if it offends people that much, maybe that's where it belonged. Not sure. Go back and re-watch and re-watch and re-watch it. It's out there. He did not pick on one single person. He made some very valid statements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Baco.
On a previous meeting, I talked to DPS director, uh, American Road, Pittsburgh Road, DPS director. And the previous meeting, I talked to, I asked her, "You make more money to me, you give me this." Please, fighting, you're nice to me. You're actually nice to me. I asked, "You make more money to me, you give me an attitude, like, better to me." Better to me. I don't know what's wrong with the guy. I didn't ask her a few questions. He said, "You're in business, obviously." He did four times, whatever, retired. Four times, he did four times, whatever, he's nice to me. Very sticky.
Thank you, Mr. Baco. Anybody else? City manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know. If I could, uh, direct your attention to the new video monitor up here while I speak. The Flag Football Extravaganza was held over this weekend. This was put together by Coach Scott Murray, Jim Neve, Inc. Corporate. This was actually the, hold on, let me look at the trophy. The Inc. Corporate Graphics Bowl, Garden City Police versus Fire, and this, uh, this is awarded to the winner. I thought it was the police department.
Oh.
That was the police department. This was really, a really neat thing. Every, everybody associated with the high school football program, uh, came out winning in this one. It was a hard-fought game. It went right down, actually, it went into overtime. I think that may be a touchdown pass there. Oh, no, sorry, that was an interception. Apparently, Dan York didn't exactly understand what I wanted to be shown here. Anyway, it was a, uh, it was really a great game, a lot of fun competition. The guys enjoyed themselves. Chief Harmon and I were spiritual leaders on the sidelines with neither one of us getting brave enough to go into the game. However, Craig Sylvester, uh, who you recall retired after thirty-five years recently, Roger Wilks, former chief who has been here well, or been gone well over twenty years and was a coach, uh, at the high school, uh, they both played for the police department. And actually, I can't remember where their slide caught, uh, one of the winning touchdowns or ran, I don't know. I, it was awfully hot out there. I'd worked up quite a sweat on the sidewalk. But it was, it was a great event with the, uh, any funds raised going toward the, the Football Hall of Fame, uh, Wall of Fame, where they acknowledge outstanding people who went on to play in the four-year colleges or went on to play in the pros over there at the high school. There were folks from, uh, east, west, Garden City High School, and it was, uh, it was really an enjoyable event. And, uh, I said more than I was supposed to because the mayor wanted to talk about this. I did want, I did want to mention to council, I, I know this will surprise you, but I left something out of my very lengthy city manager's report last week. The Old Garden Lanes Bowling Alley on Warren, that's, we know more details now. That's going to become the Green Planet LED showroom and warehouse. It's going to be a showroom, warehouse, and order center. Uh, their plans have already been submitted. I believe the stage they're at now is, they were just reviewed by Hennessy Engineering. Uh, it's, so, we're moving forward with that, and that's kind of exciting. That, that building, I don't think any of us are happy with that building. The Lucky Squirrel event, I'd love you, to give you a report on how the Lucky Squirrel event went this weekend, except I couldn't find a parking place anywhere near the thing. I have a sneaking suspicion that suggests it went rather well. But I, I really, and I'm driving a police car that can pretty well end up anywhere, and I, I couldn't find a place to park. I do want to mention to, uh, the citizens, some of you are aware, I know council is aware of a stabbing incident we had recently in the city. One of the tools we employed that night, because we had, uh, an armed suspect out and about, we didn't know exactly where he was, we wanted to alert the community, one of the things we did was use Nixle, N-I-X-L-E dot com. Uh, that sends a message to your cell phone, to your email. Uh, I encourage anybody who doesn't participate in this to go to Nixle dot com, N-I-X-L-E dot com. Uh, we were sending out messages at the time that we were looking for this guy and to please call the police department. We did get him in custody. Want to mention, uh, I believe, will this be our last meeting before school starts?
Yes.
I don't know.
I think so.
Yes.
All right, I, I just want to take this opportunity to urge people to be cautious. School's going back in session, be careful. We're blessed in this community. Our car versus schoolchildren accident rate is pretty darn low, but really, it only takes one, and a whole community can be devastated, so, please slow down and drive carefully. That's all I have. I'm sorry, are you able to see me with, uh, with this in the? That's all I have tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerwin?
Yeah, I really don't have anything tonight except for a question. Uh, what, the Green Planet, what do they do?
LED lighting, energy-efficient lighting, uh, newer technology, and, uh, they actually have a website right now, which is, I believe, called Green Planet LED. Uh, it doesn't tell you a whole lot, but it does tell you the sort of things they're going into, but this is, so this is newer, newer technology, and, uh, we're, we're excited about them coming into the city.
Very good. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCarge?
Okay, um, one before I forget, I would like to comment on Wayne County's hazardous waste pickup that they had on August fifteenth over behind J.C. Penney in Westland. It was extremely organized. The, there was a huge line of cars, I mean, it just went on forever, and I thought, oh, I'm going to be here all day, and I wasn't. It was just extremely organized. The staff did a wonderful job, so, uh, thank you, Wayne County. I would like to also encourage people, you know, in the community, if you have concerns, to communicate those concerns to us, um, either administration or to council. Council all have, we all have an email. I know I get on my email usually at least once a day through the city, um, and I will try to get answers for you. Does take a little time sometimes, but your concerns are important to us, so if you don't want to come here, please, contact us, uh, come up to City Hall, you know, let us help you as, if we can. We did receive a letter, this is an example, we did receive a letter about Sky Lanterns, and I, I really can't comment on it right now because I just, we just received the information, but someone is concerned about those in the community, and I don't think this person's the only one I've seen in the news that people are concerned about the Sky Lanterns. That's where they, um, you know, just have a light.
It's a candle.
You know, candle that goes up into the air, and again, there's some possible safety issues there, um, but I do know that they've asked about it, and I'm, I'm going to be asking some more questions about that. I would also like to thank Mr. Roney, Ms. Bettis, Chief Murray. I had a lot of frivolous, maybe, questions, uh, about some of the things on the agenda. Thank you for taking time to respond, and so I could come in here and very easily vote. So, thank you. And then one other thing, my last thing, I would like to thank the Rotary Club and also Good Hope Lutheran Church, who did a lot of, you know, uh, school, um, supply fundraising so that the kids going back to school, you know, that, you know, families are in a little bit in need, you know, have supplies to start, start out this, the year. So, thank you very much for those organizations, and I'm sure there were other ones, but these are the ones I'm aware of, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Nope, I had nothing to say except I love my city.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Nowoski?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, and the city manager, following up a little bit about what he stated about school starting, um, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Home Food Pantry is still collecting food for, um, families of Garden City, and this is an extremely important time. School's getting ready to start, and no child should go to school in the morning hungry, and I'm a firm believer, a full belly is a full brain, so let's feed our kids in Garden City and do the best that we can, so just remind everybody that they're always taking donations. Also, the chili cook-off is scheduled for October tenth, since you guys brought it up. And to remind the residents, last year, Ms. Bettis and I sold tickets, and people were coming at one thirty, two o'clock in the afternoon. I'm pretty sure they're going to be out of chili. I promise you, they're going to be out of chili. Tickets, they start selling tickets, we at eleven o'clock in the morning, so get there early, get your tickets and get your chili. It's a great, great day. That's all I have about events in the community, but I do have a quick question about the Great Lakes Water Authority. Do we have an attorney's opinion yet on that item?
No, we do not.
Okay. That's it, that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Bettis?
Uh, Your Honor, I just did want to reiterate what, uh, Ms. McCarge said. The Rotary Club, again, this year, uh, Garden City Rotary Club, um, took donations. One of the locations was at City Hall, and it was stacked to the high heavens for needy families in Garden City to, uh, start off the school year in an awesome way, and so, thank you Rotary Club again for doing that, and, um, every year, we certainly appreciate and love working with you. Um, I have been tardy on announcing that we received another grant from the National League of Cities. This was a grant that allowed us to learn about, um, children's savings accounts and preparing for post-secondary, um, accounts through, uh, per secondary cost through children's savings accounts. And, um, we're, the grant is simply just so that we can learn if that's something that can work in Garden City, and it helps families be able to afford college, and, uh, certainly, it emphasizes education and prepares our children for the workplace in the future. So, Monica Fulton and her magnificent self obtained yet another grant, and, um, that, we got that in July, and National League of Cities is, um, so enamored with her and us that they're going to come here to the council meeting as we talked about before. Thank you, that's everything, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. I just want to reiterate on that alumni event. It's the first time we've had, it's another great new event in Garden City, and, uh, we had athletes, uh, from, I think, all the decades, sixty's, seventy's, eighty's, ninety's, two thousand, uh, come to this event. It was good to see all, some of the old teachers, especially someone like me that went K through twelve in the city. It was just great to see all the people that came out for it. I want to give a shout out to Coach Murray, Inc. Corporate Graphics, Jim Neve Senior, Jim Neve, uh, Junior, Sharon from Inc. Corporate Graphics, Pastor Bob, uh, who is my pastor at Fairhaven Baptist, he's also the city chaplain. He came out and gave the invocation. It's just real good, uh, community support. It was a great event, and, uh, good time was had by all, but, uh, Chief, I was reading my packet when you were talking, I don't know if I heard you, who won the flag football game between the police and the fire department?
Garden City Police.
Okay, thank you. I thought that.
You shouldn't have to tolerate that.
I had to do that, I had to do that. Uh, that's all I have, uh, no further business, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.